Okay, Sean, just nod at me. Okay. I want to welcome everyone to the September Board of Supervisors meeting. I want to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to apologize for the delay. We were having some technical issues and our executive session ran a little bit over past 7:30. So, speaking of executive session, we did have an executive session this evening before our meeting, and we also had one on August 19th where we discussed personnel issues, potential litigation, and property acquisition. Our regular consent agenda. Acceptance of the board supervisors for August 4th, 2021 business meeting and acceptance of reports, all departmental, committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the board supervisors for the month of August 2021. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
The Treasurer's Report and Payment of Bills for the period ending August 31st, 2021. Consideration of Acceptance of the Treasurer's Report and Approval to Pay the Bills. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. EJ, would you care to comment as our treasurer?
Sure. So, the general, the Treasurer's Report before you shows an August 31st general fund balance of $5,040,000, $40,263.77. I did want to note that that, we're going to rework the Treasurer's Report for next month to pull the ARP fund out of there and show it as its own separate fund. So, you'll see that was added, that's a new addition to this month's report. That $451,000, that's our American Rescue Plan money. So, with that money taken out, because it is restricted funds, so I don't want to show it in the general fund moving forward. So, the true general fund balance is $4,589,000, which is an increase of about $45,000 over last month, and an increase of about $226,000 from the same point last year. Today, our general fund revenues are a little over $4.8 million, representing 84% of our general fund budgeted revenues. We've received about 98% of our real estate taxes for the year. And as of the end of August, we had already surpassed our budgeted revenue for real estate transfer taxes. We budgeted $250,000 and had about $258,000, and we just received another $75,000 today. So, the real estate market's helping us out a lot this year. We're bringing in more revenue for that, which is going to help since we just incurred a lot of unanticipated expenses with the storm last week. As far as expenditures go, about $3.3 million general fund as of August 31st, which is 54% of the budget. And all other funds are in order, and I've reviewed all the bills and would recommend them for payment.
Does the board have any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
There is none.
There is none, okay. All right, two-minute reports, board liaisons. Mark, do you have anything?
Nothing exciting.
Okay. Susan, do you have anything to report?
No, I do not.
No, Bob? Nope, and?
I don't either.
We're going to hit on my thing later, so.
Okay.
You know I do, but I don't know.
All right, EJ, that leaves you.
So, I'll just, and I know the board is going to want to comment on this, but just from the staff perspective, I just want to say a huge thank you to our police department, road department, and volunteer fire company, Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company, for really what was a Herculean effort during the storm last week, both during the storm itself and in the aftermath. And it's still, we're still picking up the pieces and cleaning up and assessing the damage, but just a tremendous effort, a lot of water rescues, a lot of near fatal incidents. So, really kudos to our emergency responders for a tremendous job. As far as the storm itself, from the township damage perspective, like I said, we're still assessing the damage. We understand that FEMA was in Chester County today to take a look at the hardest-hit areas. And we're hoping that as a result of that, a federal disaster declaration is made, which will unlock federal funding to help us pay for the cleanup and recovery costs. We're working on getting quotes for some of the major roads that were damaged that are going to need to be repaired. The three biggest ones, or the four biggest ones, I should say, Clothe Your Springs Road, Ashenfelter Creek Road, and Jug Hollow Road. We don't have any quotes yet, but it's fair to say we're looking at several hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs for the damage that was done. So, that's my storm report. Other two-minute reports, just a couple of grant updates. The DCNR grant for Valley Park has finally been closed out. Final payment will be processed and received within the next four to five weeks. And then, on the Greenlight Go Grants, I previously reported that the 2017 grant, which was for the project to upgrade the signals at White Horse in Valley Park and White Horse and Paw House Road, had been given the notice to proceed. The newer grant, which we were basically told was completely canceled, that was the 2018 grant application, which was for video detection system improvements at Valley Forge Road, at the intersection of Valley Forge Country Club and Ferry Lane, and the intersection of Valley Forge and Paulings Road. I was just notified last week that that is being refunded. Refunding is being restored for that. We're not going to have to reapply for that. And an updated grant agreement should be on its way, which was completely unexpected.
That's fantastic.
Completely unexpected.
Now, those two grants, EJ, if I recall correctly, once the work on those has been completed, all of the traffic lights in our township will be state-of-the-art. Is that still the case?
I'm not the right person to ask that. I don't know the answer to this.
That's not a problem.
Yeah.
That's fair.
They're going to be improved.
All right, yeah.
Both of those, the grants and the designs, were all done prior to my time here, so I don't know all the details.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And yes, I want to second what EJ said about the response from our police department and our first responders and our fire department for the work and our road crew for all of the work that they did during this storm. They did a fabulous, fantastic job, and thank you. Okay, moving on, board discussion items, old business discussion. Act 65 of 2021, the new meeting and agenda requirements under sunshine law. EJ?
Just a quick reminder, this new act is now in effect that applies to all, basically all agencies and public meetings. So, the board supervisors and all of our committees and commissions. Agenda's posted 24 hours before the meeting on the website, and we have a new window mounted to the outside of the building where the agendas are posted. No changes can be made to the agenda unless the board makes a motion to add something to the agenda and explains why the minutes then have to reflect that. Updated agenda has to be posted the next day, et cetera. So, stricter guidelines. For the most part, we've been following these, most of these guidelines. We rarely add, the board rarely votes on things that weren't on the agenda to begin with, but by law, we're now not allowed to. So, that's it.
Okay. Are there any public comment about that? Is there any public comment?
No.
Is there any questions from the board? Okay. Discussion, the COVID-19 updates. EJ?
I don't, I don't really have any updates. I mean, we've kept this on the agenda every meeting. The township operations continue as they have been the last several months. The township building is open to the public, but with limited access. We're still requesting visitors to make appointments or to conduct business virtually or electronically as much as possible. We are requiring masks for all attended, for all visitors to the building, and obviously for all public meetings, we're requiring masks as well.
Okay. Does the board have any comments or questions? Is there any public comment or questions about that, EJ?
No.
Okay. Moving on, update, the wireless ordinance, the new small cell bill, House Bill 1621 that regulates the deployment of small cell wireless facilities in the public rights of way. EJ?
Yeah, this is just a quick update because I misspoke at last month's meeting, and I know I emailed the board about this, but just for the public. This, we were under the impression that the, our updated wireless ordinance need to be adopted by October 28th, and that's not correct. October 28th is the date that the new regulations go, the new state and federal regulations governing wireless facilities go into effect, but we can still adopt our ordinance after that day. It's just, we have to follow those state and federal guidelines during that gap until our ordinance is adopted, which is really good news because this is going to be a pretty comprehensive and extensive ordinance, and this will make sure we have time to write it.
Who's writing this?
The co-in-law group.
Oh, that's what I thought, okay. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Any comments or questions in the public?
Nope.
No? Okay. New business. Consideration of Acceptance of the Resignation of Mr. Mu Jean Tulip Baidai from his role as Schuylkill Township's Volunteer Emergency Management Coordinator effective August 31st, 2021. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public here? Any comments or questions from the public online?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Mu Jean, my apologies for the pronunciation of your last name. I'm sure I butchered it. Consideration of Approval of the Shared Grinder Beast Agreement by and between Schuylkill Township, the Township and the Borough of Phoenixville, the Borough, by which the township agrees to share certain maintenance and equipment acquisition costs, and whereby each resident of the township has the right to utilize the compost site owned and operated by the borough. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment here? Any public comment online?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Consideration of Approval to Advertise for Equipment Rental and Snow Removal Bids for 2021-2022. Hi, Madeline. Tim? Tim?
Tim did. Sorry.
Is that it, Madeline? Okay, I'll move on. Okay. Consideration of Approval to Advertise for Equipment Rental and Snow Removal Bids for 2021-2022. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public here? Any comments or questions from the public online, EJ?
No, there are not.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Consideration of Acceptance of the 2022 Minimum Municipal Obligation, also known as MMO, for the Schuylkill Township Non-Uniform Pension Plan and the Police Pension Plan in the amounts of $35,389 for the non-uniform pension plan, and $94,105 for the police pension plan. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment here? Any public comment online?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Consideration of Approval to Advertise Budget Workshops at 6:00 PM on Thursday, October 21st, 2021, and if necessary, Thursday, October 28th, 2021. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consideration of Approval of the Selection of Practical Energy Solutions Incorporated as the Consultant for the Clean Energy Transition Plan and Recommendation of Approval of the Same to the Chester County Commissioners. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any comments or questions from the board? Mark, did you want to comment on this?
I'll just summarize what's happening really quick. So, this is for the Clean Energy Transition Plan, and Practical Energy Solutions is the only consulting firm that put in a bid. However, they are planning to cover the entire scope that we requested, and they are known for doing these energy, energy plans in our region. So, they're, the county's worked with them before, and they're pretty happy that they put a bid in. And our Clean Energy Group is really happy with them so far. It's Paul Spiegel. So, I'm pleased with what they've put forward, so I would recommend that we approve this. And the budget for that was like $69,000 through, through the VPP grant program with the county.
Could I add one thing, Mark?
Yeah.
East Pike Land approved this last night.
Yeah.
And it's on one of the other municipalities.
It's on West Pike Land's agenda already for the 20th, I think.
Does the board have any other comments or questions? Any public comment or questions? EJ?
None online, nope.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, Participation in Affordable Housing Summit Panel. Oh, you have me down here to discuss this. I guess I did put it on the agenda, didn't I?
You sure did.
So, um, I think, Mark?
Yeah, so I got a call from Chris.
Oh, you actually spoke to him?
Yeah. So, Chris Keller is with Orion Communities, and she's the executive director there. They're the nonprofit for, they're a nonprofit down in Phoenixville, and they work on affordable housing. So, they're hosting a panel on the 24th, and they are looking for someone who can represent Schuylkill Township on that. They've already got somebody from East Pike Land and some other municipalities in the area, and they're looking, looking for participation here. I'm unavailable, so I asked her to forward it to the board, and seems like, I think Martha said she wasn't available.
I am also not available. This is an all-day thing.
Yeah, it's, so it starts at like, one sec. What, what time does it start? At like 11:00 AM, so it's, it's daytime. So, if any of you are available in the daytime, and?
You know, I'm just going to express my view that I don't, I would vote no in terms of participating in this because I'm really not convinced that our township doesn't have sufficient affordable housing, and I think we have quite a bit. And I feel like there are other townships around us who don't have much. And I guess, I feel like every time we're asked to participate in something like this, we end up being pressured to have more. And I feel like before, I'm going to be pressured to have more in our township. I think someone would need to present to me a basis for saying we don't have enough, we're not doing our part in this regard, and I just haven't heard that yet.
I think the participation on our part, if it's the board's feeling that there is enough affordable housing, it would be our job to explain that we have enough and we don't expect to take on more until others in the region also take on some more.
Yeah, I don't feel like I should go, I mean, if you look at this, this is, you know, they're targeting Spring City and other areas. I mean, I feel like they should be targeting different, Radnor. You know, those are the townships around us that I don't see any in. And I feel like this is just focusing on us and a few around us that I think also have a lot of affordable housing. So, if somebody else wants to go and express that to them, they're welcome to do that, but I don't feel like it's my job to go express that. I think somebody should present to us why we're not doing a good job, and I would be open to hearing that. But I look around and see a lot of affordable housing in our township, and I don't see that same commitment when I drive through other wealthy townships around us. So, I feel like the focus should be on them and not as much on us, but that's just my opinion. If someone else wants to?
No, I happen, I happen to agree with you, and it's something that I've been saying for a while. Should we come up with some sort of a letter to send to them and say why we don't feel we should participate in this?
I'm fine with that, or if someone wants to go, I can't go either, but I also?
I can't, I can't go either.
But I also don't feel like this should be a focus for our board, unless someone has information that I should consider otherwise.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like they were singling us out as someplace that needs more affordable housing. I think it's just to talk about the situation in the region. That's, that's what it sounded like in my phone call and what it seems like in this email.
Tim or Bob, would either one of you have the time to be able to attend this summit?
Either way, I think we'll have to send a letter expressing our regret that we can't, we can't make it. However, I think the content of the letter should reflect that we feel that there is sufficient affordable housing in our area and that the regional comprehensive plan takes this into account, where we share the burden of affordable housing in the region by virtue of different home types. I would, I would think that that would, that, that we do take that into account in this region, and Schuylkill has taken on a higher share than other municipalities.
Are we looking for a fight if we do that, or is it better just to say we can't make it?
Yeah, that's, I agree with Bill on that.
Well, I'm happy to say, say we can't make it.
It depends on how, if you're looking for a fight or not.
No, I don't, I don't think.
This is policy, not law. I'm just?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're so much looking for a fight.
No, I'm fine with that as well. I just didn't think it was something hard word to be focusing on, but I'm fine just saying we can't make it.
Yeah, I think that's fine too. Okay.
All right.
Do you want me to respond?
You, you're welcome. I mean, I'm happy to respond and let, let them know we can't participate. All right.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
No, I appreciate it. Did we, did we make a motion there?
No, it was just discussion.
Thank you. I'm like looking at one above it.
Yeah, it was just discussion.
Okay, cool.
Okay. Resolutions and ordinances. Consideration of Enactment of Ordinance Number 2021-04, Amending Chapter 248 Peddling and Soliciting of the Township Code. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public here? Any public or comment, any public comment online, EJ?
There are not.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consideration of Advertisement of Ordinance Number 2021-05, Amending Chapter 340, The Vehicles and Traffic, Section 340-2, Interference with Snow Removal, Salting, Cindering, or Plowing Operations of the Township Code. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment here? Any public comment online?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Consideration of Adoption of Resolution Number 2021-13, Ratifying the September 1st, 2021 Emergency Declaration for Schuylkill Township. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? The only thing I wanted to say about this is the emergency declaration does help us, like EJ had mentioned earlier. If FEMA does come in and talks about our area as needing, or they declare our area a disaster, this declaration will help us with getting money. So, this is more of a money thing than it is anything else, so I just wanted to make that comment. Do we have any questions from the public?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have, uh?
Subdivision.
Subdivision and Land Development. The August Planning Commission update, Deckman Motors and Dawson Drive, on Dawson Drive. EJ?
Yeah, just, I think several of the board members were in attendance at the August Planning Commission, but the applicant for 140 Dawson Drive, Deckman Motor and Pump, was at the meeting to present his updated land development plans for the commercial warehouse, or industrial warehouse, I should say, which is intended to house his business, Deckman Motor and Pump. No votes or decisions were made, or recommendations were made at the meeting. He just basically attended and gave a presentation and answered questions. The Township Engineers Review Letter will be coming out by Friday of this week, and it'll be shared with the applicant and the planning commission, and the applicant will reappear at the next planning commission meeting, which I think is next week. I think it's a week from today.
Oh, so he's returning?
Yes, he has, yeah, he has to come back because they didn't, they didn't vote, and he wasn't expecting a vote. They knew they weren't going to be voting. It was just to try to answer some questions. The meeting went well.
They needed the engineer review.
They needed the engineer review. He didn't, he submitted, he resubmitted the plans in time to get on the August Planning Commission meeting, but he didn't submit it in time to get the engineer's review letter for the meeting. So, but he still attended. It went well. He'll be there next week. It's possible the planning commission may be ready to vote next week. If not, it would be pushed off another month. So, that's it. So, if anyone, you know, if you want to attend, because if, if the planning commission does vote, you know, the next step would then be to come to the board supervisors for approval.
Okay.
Yep.
Additional business. On September 16th, our workshop meeting. Our agenda will be our PRPC hearing and PSAT's resolutions. Does anyone have any other thing that they would like to put on the agenda?
No, I did speak with Penn Environment about our bag band, but Stephanie is going to be on leave, so she connected me with Baron, who spoke for us, but he is not, we have not connected on whether he could make that meeting. I'm thinking he probably can't because now it's close, so I'm thinking we should look at the next one.
Okay.
If he, I mean, if he can, we could, we could still add him. Keep in mind that the October workshop is dedicated, is the budget workshop.
Oh, okay, okay.
We could, I mean, we, we could still have him on that night. We would just either do it right at the beginning and want it to be brief, or at the end, which might be a while. It may not be a good night to do it, but I mean, that would be up to the five of you. It could be a long meeting.
We could have him virtually?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, even next week, yeah, anytime, he could attend virtually.
Yeah, they said, Penn Environment said they're trying to do most of their things virtually.
That's fine.
So, but he would be able to connect with us.
Would it be possible to have him at, because usually with our budget meetings, we're usually able to get that done in one night, but we scheduled two. Would he be able to attend the second one maybe, or do we have to advertise, change the advertisement for that?
We could, because the, does the budget effort, workshop advertisement have to be specific for the budget workshop, or can it just be a workshop? Yeah, I'll have to double check. I'd rather not meet twice in October if we don't have to.
Yeah.
My personal?
Oh, okay, okay, that's fine, that's fine. We don't have to. I mean, it's, this isn't something that, um?
It's a contingency.
Yeah, so, um, but if we wanted to discuss it, because I know that we shared some things after our meeting, you know, like the videos that I sent out. I also got some information from the Girl Scouts. Do you guys just want to put, you know, an update on that for our?
The other thing I was going to mention is Stephanie did send me their recommended ordinance on plastic bands. So, they're trying to develop a recommended plastic band ordinance, so that could be something we start out with as a?
Okay.
I'll circulate that.
For next week's workshop?
If we want to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think add a third agenda item, just the ongoing plastics.
Discussion.
Discussion. Okay, anything else? All right. Announcements. I do have a page full of announcements here, so bear with me. Resources for the Chester County residents affected by Hurricane Ida, such as a flood recovery guide, a damage survey tool, and information on housing assistance, may be found on the county's Hurricane Ida information page at www.chesco.org. found on the county's Hurricane Ida information page at www.chesco.org/ida. Aqua Pennsylvania encourages customers throughout its southeastern Pennsylvania service area to continue their efforts to save water until further notice, as Aqua works to restore normal operations at Aqua's water treatment plants. Updates on Aqua's Pickering Water Treatment Plant may be found on the Aqua America Pennsylvania website at aquammerica.com/our-states/pennsylvania. The Board of Supervisors continues to strongly recommend that residents refer to and follow the CDC guidance and recommendations regarding the ongoing COVID-19 and COVID variant safety measures and procedures. Township residents looking for testing and/or vaccine information should visit the Chester County Coronavirus COVID-19 Website. All Township Boards, Committees and Commissions have resumed in-person public meetings at the Township Hall. All meeting attendees and visitors are required to wear masks regardless of vaccination status. At this time, the Schuylkill Township Administrative Offices are open with limited public access. Appointments to meet with Township staff are recommended. Building permit applications may continue to be submitted electronically via the US Mail or by drop-off to the delivery bin at the Township Building. Saturday, September 18th, 2021, the Friends of the Medal of Honor Grove will be holding their annual fall community cleanup from 8:30 AM to 12:00 PM. For more information or to volunteer, please visit www.friendsmohgrove.com or their Facebook page. Monday, September 27th, 2021, the Schuylkill Township Police Association is holding their second annual community blood drive at the Calvary Bible Church, which is across the street here, from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Please visit the Township website for more information on donating. On Friday, October 1st, 2021, to heighten the awareness of the issue, the Domestic Violence Center of Chester County will hold a tree lighting ceremony at 7:00 PM in the Schuylkill Township Municipal Complex. Details will be available on the Township website closer to the date. 2021 Fire Prevention Week is Sunday, October 3rd through Saturday, October 9th. This year's campaign is Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety on Monday, October 4th, 2021. The Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company will hold their annual open house for Fire Prevention Week. Visit the fire company's website or Facebook page for details. Saturday, October 9th, the Fire Company Auxiliary is holding their lasagna sale. Order yours online at Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company website, and I have to tell you, it's delicious. I ordered it last year.
October 9th.
October 9th. It's very good. I had it last year. Yes, you can go online to order.
Okay.
It said Bob's here to perk you up.
Oh, God. Saturday, October 9th, 2021, the final household hazardous waste collection event for Chester County will be held at the Government Services Center in Westchester. For more information, please visit the Chester County Solid Waste Authority website. Does anyone have any other announcements to make?
Quick correction on the Medal of Honor Grove website, is it .org?
Okay, thank you. It's .org, not .com. Thank you. Tom, does the fire company have anything else other than their fire prevention week going on? Do they have a, and their lasagna? Do you know?
Sorry, I didn't mean to...
Okay, great. Thank you. Right, does anyone have any other announcements? All right, public comment? Any public comment here? EJ, do we have any public comment online?
There is none on the line at the moment. Nope.
All right.
Okay. I will make the motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
I can.
All those in favor?
I have record time.
The meeting is adjourned.
I will not be here next month.
Okay.